Okay. All right, I just, I just thought, don't slam us, don't slam us. All right, let's go ahead and begin.
Okay. Good morning, this is a special meeting of the El Paso City Council for Monday, March 25th, 2019. It is 9:07 a.m. President Armelio Marco, Representative Salsido, Representative Shortspine, Representative Anello, Representative Hernandez, Representative Liz Araga, Representative Rivera, and Representative Morgan.
Before we begin, I want to have a moment of silence in recognition of the passing of Deputy Herrera at the Sheriff's Department. I spoke to Sheriff Wiles this morning, expressed our condolences. Anytime law enforcement loses someone, as Henry knows better than most, it's a real tragedy. So, let's have a moment of silence, if you would please, for, uh, the family. Amen.
Amen. On the agenda this morning is discussion and action on the city of El Paso's efforts to address the current immigrant influx.
Chief.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Hey Chief, before you get started, I'd like to just start with a few comments with the council. So, Mayor and Council, we've been getting, uh, receiving information from the CVP since, uh, December 24th, as far as the immediacy of the information. The mayor and I were at an event, and that's first, uh, we heard of it, Representative Shortspine was there as well, and so it has not let up ever since. And it has been a fluctuation of needs and services, and I want to commend Mario, also the police chief in the Office of Emergency Management, for their efforts and what they're engaged to do on a regular basis. They have a continuity of operations plan that they always work in an emergency plan that they work, and so they've been doing a fine job with that, but we're, uh, coming up to a precipice of a lot of decisions that are impacting us because of the relationship with the law, with the ordinances we have in place, and things we can or cannot do. So, we wanted to give you an update of the veracity of the different issues that the chief has had to contend with, and that we've had to deal with. The mayor, uh, has been intimately involved, uh, with the different agencies, the different groups, at the, at the state and the federal level, and it's just reached a point where we feel like we need to not only just, uh, have a discussion publicly, but then also have a discussion, executive session, with regard to your, uh, legal advice, your city attorney, and what, uh, options we have and do not have. This, this is, um, from a local perspective, could become a local public safety emergency, one of which we have to respond to, and we don't want to react to it, we want to be proactive. And so, this is part and parcel, uh, what we're trying to do is sit down with you and have that discussion publicly. Now, we've given this update before, I think it was in January?
Yes, sir.
And, so, we've done this already, uh, but we need to get some approvals from you on work that's already been done, and some guidance on what we will be doing going forward. So, with that, Mario.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, kind of an overview of what's been going on. So, this large influx has started occurring in October of 2018. So, that's when we had those first, uh, unannounced releases at the bus depot downtown. A lot of the changes that's been happening with the influx is the change in demographics. You've got family units, unaccompanied minors coming in. As asylum seekers present at the point of entries, or they're apprehended by border patrol, they're then processed through ICE and ERO, which coordinates their court proceedings. Laws in detention space limit the time that customers of the border patrol and ICE can detain them. Migets are then, once they are released, they're then free. They're released on their own recognizance to travel to their final destination. The local agreement between the ICE and NRO, and the NGO, sorry, is to provide temporary housing, temporary relief, until their transport out of El Paso. So, the non-government organizations. The annunciation house provides a temporary shelter, food, clothing, and assistance, and the travel arrangements to and from the shelters, or from the shelters to the local transportation hubs, either the airport or the bus terminal. They've assisted with these migrants over the last five years. Since October, they've expanded to 27 hospitality centers and nine hotels across El Paso, Anthony, Chaparral, La Cia, Las Cruces, and Albuquerque. The volunteer shortage and, the coordination efforts that have been seen in the last few weeks is the volunteer shortage. They're putting a high task on their volunteers. Again, the change in demographics, those family units takes a different housing priority too as well, they're utilizing more space for that, so it's a little bit more difficult. What the annunciation house is in need of is a facility to house these immigrants. They're spending currently around 50,000 a week in hotels. The lack of a centralized location is what's putting a burden on the volunteers. So, each one of these sites takes an average of 12 to 15 people to manage the site. So, when you're spread out across 27 sites, you can see what the volunteer pool is. Additional space to co, so with this centralized location, it'll help them to coordinate with their, uh, volunteers, and it'll give them additional space to cover the hotels and surpluses that they have for that equipment and stuff when they do have to sign that up. When we're looking at the summary of events, for the El Paso area, fiscal year 17 brought in 12,000 migrants to our area. Fiscal year 18 brought in 18,000. And year-to-date for fiscal year 19, we're over 50,000. With that large influx, 32,000 of them has come since January 1st. Last week, I received a text from DHS, and on, I believe it was Thursday, 1,200 apprehensions in our area. So, that shows what the intake is. We were told yesterday that they're on top, on par, starting today, they're going to be releasing 750 migrants to our area on a daily basis. So, these are unprecedented numbers. So, we look at OEM's role. Their mission is to prevent those releases from spilling onto the streets. That's the whole thing. With all the coordination they're doing, they're coordinating daily with DHS to include ICE, Customs, Border Patrol, and the annunciation house for these scheduled releases. They're working all the resource needs with the, with the nonprofits for meals, cots, transportation, et cetera. I mean, it's been a daily process since October. They've been outreach into Albuquerque, their nonprofits and faith-based organizations, so they can take on more, and we've seen, we've been shipping quite a few out in the past three weeks. Um, when that happens, ICE is transporting them from their custody here, straight to Albuquerque, which places no burden on the bus system here. Um, they also coordinated with the medical assessments by DHS and the local hospitals. That was early in January when they wanted to do medical assessments on all, on all in custody. Customs and border patrol and independent school district coordination for migrant caravan impacts on the point of entries, as we've all seen lately, and Mr. Coronado can speak higher, more to it, is they are hardening the bridges. They're getting ready for the what-ifs, in case they had to shut down bridges. We've seen them shut them down around the country, around the state, but the threat in our area with the number of migrants coming across is there. On the emergency basis, what they've done, so the first one was in October 26th of 19. For that one, law enforcement escorted them over to the annunciation house facility. So, they basically got them all in line, and we escorted them, walked them up the street. During the second unscheduled release in December 23rd to the 25th, we actually used Sun Metro buses. The weather was inclement, we didn't want them walking, it was unsafe for them to walk through the streets, pity was overpassed with the crowd at hand, so we did call in Sun Metro to transport them up to the different hospitality sites. Last week, we had 145 that was released one day over the capacity of the, uh, annunciation house. That's the way we were looking at what our possibilities are. Could we open up a shelter as a possible warming center? A place to keep them off the streets, off of the downtown bus depot, somewhere where we could go and start the processing until the annunciation house could identify a location for them to stay. Luckily, we were able to, uh, the annunciation house was able to find a hotel, and they were transported directly there from, from ICE. The city of El Paso's role. So, last week, we started a volunteer drive. That was both city and county employees, and that was to help the annunciation house with the task at hand. With spring break, a lot of their volunteers were out of town, home with their children, so his volunteer bank went down. With that, we reached the capacity levels where we were worried they were going to be released in the streets. So, we've done that coordination, we've been working with United Way, Ms. Farini, to, we're trying to set them up where they're going to be the main central coordinating point for volunteers for the annunciation house. This takes the scheduling and the tasking of the daily needs, and it puts it under one central location, so that Rubin can adjust accordingly. The county has directed, I believe, 20,000 to fund a volunteer coordinator, and that's working through with the, uh, United Way. So, options going forward. The annunciation house is working on securing a large warehouse facility for utilizing a shelter. That would truly help this need. That would allow them to centralize all their volunteers, all their efforts, coordinated out of one location. It takes less staff, less volunteers. It's easier to arrange for transportation out of a scheduled, on a scheduled basis out of one location. So, right now, we talked about 27 different sites. Well, you got two people coming out of one site, going to the bus depot at 9:00 a.m., but you might have three, four, or five at all 27 sites, it's hard to coordinate that. Each one of those is a volunteer in their personal car to drive them over. If we had one central location, they could look at utilizing a different system for transporting, where they could take multiples at the same time. Assistant to NGOs. I think the voluntary recruitment and management is the push we need to make. We need to get, we need to continue working with, with our other NGOs such as the, uh, I'm sorry. I lost my part. United Way, sorry. So, we need to continue working with United Way so they can handle the volunteer base. Reimbursement. It's tough. We do know the state of Texas has offered some reimbursements for communities that have had to stand up shelters. They've also assisted with the NGOs directly in offering them grant funding to help them with their day-to-day tasks. I think the biggest push right now is to see the annunciation house move into a facility where they can streamline their operations. That's the, just the presentation, I don't know what you wanted to say.
Chief, would you reiterate those numbers again on the, the releases that have, over the last couple of years?
Yes, sir. So, again, fiscal year 17, 12,000. Fiscal year 18, 18,000. Year-to-date, 50,000.
50,000?
50,000, yes, sir. That was last Thursday, I believe I got that number.
And, uh, Mario, the numbers comparatively, comparatively to the last two years, we're on schedule for 100,000.
Yes, sir.
So, that's five times more than the previous year.
Yes, sir.
All right. Questions, Council?
I, I do. Has the federal government contacted us at all? Are they, are they going to reimburse the city for their, their efforts, or?
We've seen no reimbursements from the federal side. I mean, the pass-through through the state money is federal dollars, but it passes through to the state, but we've seen no direct grants from the federal government to assist with this. The way they're looking at it is, once they're released, they're released on their own recognizance.
I have a question. You brought up the fact that, that DHS was busing people to Albuquerque.
Yes.
So, what is the process that they're doing that as opposed to dropping people off in El Paso? You're telling me that they're, that on their own accord, they're going to Albuquerque? So, I'm just curious about, how do they make that decision? And what are the funds that they're using for busing people to Albuquerque as opposed to El Paso?
So, that's, that's at the federal level. So, when they release them to their own recognizance, they're releasing them under our local agreement to the annunciation house. So, what we're doing is, we reached out to Albuquerque, and we work with their nonprofits and their faith-based programs, so that they could take on more. So, the same process that Rubin's going through, with the annunciation house on a daily basis, they're looking at what their intake capabilities are, and they're letting ICE know that they can take in 100 for the day. And so, ICE is scheduling those transports, it's directly from ICE.
It is, it seems, it seems that this, wherever, wherever people's politics are of this, it seems to be, um, approaching a possibility of being a humanitarian issue and a public safety issue more than anything else for our local community, uh, do no part to the failure of the federal government in application of resources and understanding what's, what's occurring. So, it seems that the discussion really here is about how do we go and, and make sure that our community is safe, um, and these, these folks that are, that are here, that, that we're able to be efficient and make sure that we have public safety as the top priority for, for everybody in this community, whether they're here for a day or whether they've been here their whole lives.
Well, their, the, the standard timeline is 24 to 48 hours, right, Rubin? And then, sometimes as long as 96 hours, is what I'm told, and they, they go on to wherever their sponsors are. And, uh, but, but the influx is, is, is because of, frankly, the bottom line is, our federal government has failed to address immigration reform in a proper manner, and that's the biggest problem. So, that's where we are. We have certain limitations, unfortunately, but we'll talk about those as we go on. Do you all have anything else? We have some public comment.
We have some questions. Um, City Manager mentioned that we're looking at 100,000 this year, but do we see an end in sight during this administration? So, a shelter for right now, a volunteer coordinator, we're just looking at the immediate year. This could be increased, and it could be back here in six months, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I really just, I, I think this is a great discussion, I'm glad we're having it, I, I think we should also be looking at policies that'll be dealing with this issue in the long term, and keeping our community safe in the long term, and, and not just putting Band-Aids on, on the situation for the next six months.
Be helpful if Washington would respond as well.
If I could add, another burden we're seeing is, and Rubin can attest to it, is our bus depot. They're overloaded. They've added two routes over the last few months, but they're still going to leave in town on a 100% capacity, I mean, they're full. Yesterday, we had drivers call in, so I believe they shut down three bus lines out of town yesterday. Those makeup bus trips out of here don't come up until Wednesday. So, that's three, they were already going to get releases, they've probably been in town for three days. That extends it another three days, plus everything we're receiving daily. That's how it's compounding. The buses can't keep up with the system right now.
I think that is why we want to have a public discussion, and we also want to have an executive discussion, is because the laws are not set up, uh, for us to do all the things we would typically do. So, when the mayor says the federal government needs to respond, that, that's true, I mean, the laws, the way they're made up right now, we're not set up to react or be proactive to this kind of issue. So, we really need to, not only come up with policies, but really start discussing the, the law, and, and what the state and federal law, um, need to, how it needs to change, and what it needs to look like for us to be able to appropriately respond to an emergency like this, because we consider this a local emergency, a local public safety emergency, because it could quickly turn into that. You know, we have been told that while we're having people at the bus station, it's not an emergency, but when it's cold, I think, I think it's an emergency. If you have them walking around downtown and, and nowhere to go, nowhere, nothing to eat, it can be, quickly become an issue, a public safety concern.
All right. Reverend Oliver, you have a question?
I just have a little question. With all the members that you asked, do you know if three days is the max, is they're staying here in El Paso, or some have chosen to actually stay here?
The vast majority of them that we're being told are not staying here. I mean, it's negligent, the number of people who stay in our community.
It's pastor.
It's all pastor.
So, I can tell you, I've, I've had the opportunity to, I want to.
Sorry, I can tell you, I've, I've had the opportunity to volunteer a couple of times this weekend and other times prior as well. When, when, when the Annunciation House or the NGO see them at, at this point, they already have their sponsor numbers there. They already have family or relatives or somebody that they're trying to get in touch with and trying to get to. So them being in our community is really a stopgap. They're here basically just to get in touch with whoever's there, whatever city they're in, so that they can start the formal process of asylum. So I don't think that there's-
Very little.
Very, very little. So, I mean, but there's a clear need for, to support what's already being done there. Uh, and I don't think that anybody wants to see dozens, if not hundreds, of people wandering through downtown without an ability to get in touch with their loved ones, restraining our, our, our local capacity. And that's, I think, really important. I also think too, Mayor, and Council, that we need to look at making a formal correspondence to state and federal figures as well, reiterating what is going on here on the local level, and how their lack of action and playing politics with this is, is dent, is hurting our community. Once again, we have people that are coming from outside of the border, coming outside of our community, and telling us what's right, what's wrong, and what's, what's going on. And I think that we need to show our perspective.
We, uh, I've been trying my darndest for the last six weeks to do that. You have, Mayor? On local, national, and that's, that's the whole plan. Let's move into our public comment, and then we'll, we'll continue dialogue.
Good morning. This, we have three members of the audience that seem to speak. The first person is Mr. Dylan Corbett. Good morning, sir. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the, the council. I'm actually here in my position as the Chairman of the Diocese and Commission on Migration. The bishop has asked me to offer a statement to you. He's unable to be here because he's actually lobbying on behalf of Comprehensive Immigration Reform in Austin, Texas, right now. But he did ask me to read this statement, so I will. In the polarized political climate of today, any actions that are taken in the public forum are often interpreted as political. I would like to point out that the care of families, many of young children and babies left on the streets of El Paso with nothing but their clothes on their backs, is not a political matter of either left or right. When people with no food and no money, no way to contact sponsor families, and to receive from them bus tickets to continue their journey, are left on our streets, it is not enough to say it is not our responsibility to be involved in immigration policy. This is simply a matter of the common good, our good as well as that of these vulnerable refugees. For months now, our churches in cooperation with Annunciation House have stepped up and taken in those who are passing through our city. We've been honored to do this work, which we consider holy. It is because of this work that these families have not been left to sleep in the streets of El Paso. We will continue to do all we can, but we have come to a point at which we can no longer do this alone. This situation should be a concern for the whole community of El Paso. It's time for this city to do the right thing and take the steps necessary to ensure that none of these vulnerable families are left alone and unedited on our streets. Wishing God's blessing and guidance upon you in your important work, I'm Bishop Mark J. Sights, Bishop of the Diocese of El Paso. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Marisa Limón. Good morning, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council, Chief, and other leaders. My name is Marisa Limón Garza, it's an honor and privilege to be here, especially on this important topic of migration. I spent the last 17 years living in Austin, Texas, where we have a, a commission on migration that focuses on all kinds of immigrant services, specifically out of city pockets and city funds. And so it's exciting to hear that El Paso is considering all options when it comes to supporting our migrant brothers and sisters. This is a time where we are thrust into the national spotlight. We are the recipients of a federal situation. However, it's our chance to shine, to rise, to meet the occasion, to lead with vision and innovation, and to think through how we want El Paso to be in the center of that conversation. How we want folks to know that fronterizos and fronterizas understand this global change and how the world is working, and how we can respond in partnership with our business community, with our faith community, and show the world what it means to be this kind of space where we honor and recognize the human dignity of all folks, especially those that are coming into our community. So we invite you all to engage with the Hope Border Institute, where an organization that's focused on social justice issues, and we do a lot of work around education on these exact issues. We're happy to come to council. We're happy to come to your constituencies. We're happy to talk about what's going on in real time. We're some of the only organizations doing original, border-based research on immigration and migration, and we invite you to be part of that dialogue, part of that conversation, and help us to build a level of understanding so we understand not just the humanitarian crisis that may be happening, but instead also the justice and the need for the focus on kind of the moral imperatives of what we're being impelled to do. Uh, so we ask that the City of El Paso really think through, when we talk about visit El Paso and the beauty that this community is, that we think through our role in that regard, and how welcoming the migrant and figuring things out with all of our resources, with all of our innovation, with all of our great thinking, to see how we can do that even better. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final speaker is Mr. Luanne Garza.
I yield my time to Ruben.
Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. I, actually, I wasn't aware that you all were going to meet this morning, and I wish I had been aware until very recently. My intention this morning is simply to make sure that, that we understand what it is that is happening. Annunciation House for many, many years has been receiving the refugees that have been released by ICE. This has been going on for a long time. The surge that we're seeing right now is actually the fourth surge during the past five years. For ourselves, we define a surge any time that the numbers that ICE releases exceed 1,000 per week. And we've seen three others prior to this time. Annunciation House has several buildings. Our buildings are nowhere near the, the ability to absorb those kinds of numbers every time there is a surge. Whenever there is a surge, we then go out to churches and ask them if they would be willing to open their doors and receive refugees. And, and thus far, we've been able to do that. The reason this conversation hasn't taken place before now is that previously, in each one of those surges, we were able to find the number of churches and, and Annunciation Houses were also able to open up hotels to, to accommodate people. And so we were able to receive everyone that was released, and, and so it just never reached the level that it has reached now. It's really important for everybody to understand that 99.99% of all of the families that are released, in fact, have someone in the United States that they can go to, a family member, a relative, or a friend, so they don't stay in El Paso. Previously, the level of bus transportation out of El Paso was such that there were enough seats, people could move on. There are some family members or relatives that are able to afford a plane ticket, and so some left by plane. And so, um, it would just use a symbolic person. Maria, with her two children from Honduras, gets released by ICE on Monday. She comes to one of our hospitality centers, and we contact their relative, family member, friend, ask them, go buy a bus ticket, a plane ticket, call us back, give us the confirmation number. Oftentimes, Maria's relative would call back Tuesday morning, I bought a, I got a bus, I've got a plane, she leaves tonight. Maria and her two kids would be on their way within about 24 hours. Sometimes, the turnaround wasn't quite 24 hours. Maybe Maria would leave on Tuesday, she would leave on Wednesday. But people moved on fairly smoothly, and I think that's, all of you can attest to this, because none of this ever really made the news. It didn't make the news because it all flowed fairly smoothly. Okay? It, people were released, they came to our sites, um, we received them, they had a place to sleep, um, meals, et cetera, and then they, they moved on. The surge that we're in right now is very different. And it's different primarily because we are not talking about 1,000 per week. We're now averaging, uh, 3,500 per week. We're approaching 4,000 per week. And my concern is that we're going to, to get into the 5,000 and 6,000, um, 7,000 per week. We, we can approach that. What are some of the things that, that still remain available to us? One is to continue to appeal to churches, to open their space, to allow COTS to come in, and, and for you to understand, if you happen to be the pastor of a church, your concern is that if I allow COTS to come into part of the physical space of my church, that that's the same space that I use for church activities, especially on the weekends. But given that people don't stay, then pastors begin to think, like, for example, and, and this is today. Today, 30 refugees are going to El Calvario Methodist Church in Las Cruces. 40 refugees are going to St. Anthony's Church in Anthony, New Mexico. 60 refugees are going to St. Thomas Aquinas here in El Paso. 80 refugees are going to San Antonio de Tadua, um, here in El Paso. 20 refugees are going to the Mesa Inn Hotel. That is, ICE has notified us that they are releasing 292 refugees as part of their morning release. That's their morning release. There is a second noon release. The noon release is in excess of 300, so that the total for today, they are releasing 622 members of family. This is the ICE family unit, okay? So these are all family units. I still don't have where the afternoon, the noon release people are going to go, and I'm very concerned, I'm not going to have the space for them, okay? So what is different about this moment and previous ones is that of the numbers. As was already mentioned, we have reached out to Albuquerque. I went up to Albuquerque. I met with numerous people. We have tried on numerous occasions now to send, to ask ICE. You need to understand that ICE gives me the numbers. I then tell ICE where to send the buses, okay? Like, I, today, I asked ICE to send a bus to Las Cruces, to El Calvario, a bus to Anthony, a bus to all the other sites. Tomorrow, for example, I'm going to ask ICE to send four buses to Albuquerque. There are two different groups, Madonna Center in Albuquerque and the Albuquerque Interfaith that is going to release 80. We are renting a hotel, Annunciation House is renting a hotel in Albuquerque. They're putting the volunteers. So tomorrow, 180 of them will be going to Albuquerque. Going forward, what are the major concerns? A, a, a major concern is that we need more capacity, more venues. I happen to be of the opinion, and I, and I said this to a journalist, there are at least 400 churches in El Paso, at least. If each church were to find it within themselves as a faith community to host 20 refugees per week, just 20 per week, that would provide us with 8,000 hospitality sites per week, okay? Clearly more than what we're presently seeing. Not even beginning to talk about the possibility of finding other sites in places like Las Cruces and Albuquerque. There is a meeting being set in Albuquerque where I'm going to go up there to meet with a, a group of churches to try and encourage them to also open their, their sites because of a volunteer aspect of how all of this is done. 99% of all of this is done with volunteers. So the ability to still elicit the help from churches in El Paso, Las Cruces, Albuquerque. Part of that is the concern that was already mentioned, that our bus transportation out of El Paso does not have the capacity. Even if our fairy godmother came and magically had a 1,000 cot facility open, we would find ourselves having to keep people not 24, not 48, not 72, 96 hours, having to keep them here a week, eight days, because our bus capacity is not enough to help people move on. That's a big issue, and I don't know how you handle that. I don't know how I handle that. A second concern that I have, and, and I've been speaking to ICE about this, is I really want to explore the possibility of asking that ICE send buses into the Dallas-Fort Worth area. It's a much larger, more sophisticated travel hub where buses, um, airlines would be more readily available. We would appeal to churches in the Dallas-Fort Worth area to do the same thing that happens here. There is, however, a problem. And the problem is that, under present regulation, ICE is prohibited from transporting individuals for more than eight hours. I'm not positive about this, so I don't want you to hold me at my word. I believe that the issue is that if you put families on a bus, that their guidelines prohibit them from having those families be on that bus for more than eight hours. We fit in that eight-hour timeframe in, in Albuquerque. Obviously, that would be exceeded if we went to a place like Dallas. I've been speaking to some people in Dallas, but that, to me, would be one possibility where we would be able to maybe send 200, 250, 300 refugees on a daily basis to the, to the Dallas area as one way to try and, and, and manage the numbers. You cannot send too many people to Albuquerque because Albuquerque's Greyhound bus station is even more limited than El Paso's. We, we've already sent several hundred refugees to Albuquerque, and, and we bumped into the limitation that the bus system in Albuquerque is even more hampered than it is here in El Paso. So to send 200 refugees one day, four, five days later, send another 100, 200, something like that might be, might be viable, but I would be concerned of thinking that we would be able to send on a regular basis 200 people to, to Albuquerque. I don't think that Albuquerque would be able to, to, to move them on. Today is a really good example. I don't know that I'm going to have space for 622. This means that there could be somewhere between 50 and 100 individuals that will get released downtown. ICE has the practice of releasing them there by Greyhound. I honestly don't know why they choose that particular site. I don't know that that's the best site. It clearly puts the Greyhound bus station as a business in a really precarious situation because they can't have everybody come in and, and wait in their, their, their bus station. So we continue to receive them. We will continue to receive them. We're very concerned about the possibility of continuing to pay out these hotels. Annunciation House, over the past four or five months, has now paid out over $1 million into two hotels. We're not going to be able to sustain that. If the day comes when we just can't do that anymore, then we're all going to be back here, and the discussion is going to be very, very different than the discussion that we're having right now. We're looking at, at a couple of very large buildings to see if we can convert them into a hospitality site where it would be possible to, to put 400, 500 COTS, to see if we can't get out of some of the hotels. But that is still in the works and in discussion, and, until something is definite. So that's why I want to come here this morning. So thank you all for your time. Okay?
Thank you, Ruben. We appreciate all that you have been doing. I think Homeland Security told me we were the second highest crossings on the border. I think Kewaunaw is still, San Diego, number one, but it's not getting any better. All right, we ready to go into executive session?
We move to go into executive session. First motion, the second, to return to executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, anyone opposed? And the City Council and the City of El Paso, they're returning to executive session pursuant to Section 3.5A of the El Paso City Charter, the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D. D, to discuss item one, discussion enacted in the City of El Paso's efforts to address the current immigrant influx, under 551.071, consultation with attorney, it is nine forty-six
May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm ready to move back in session at 12:24pm.
Okay, we have a motion to read and then we will discuss if it's ready, it's not quite ready. So, uh, smoke them if you got them.
Right on, right on. Smoke them if you, I take it. Smoke them if you got them. That was well written, man. Thank you, Sissy. Mayor, we missed you on the trailhead opening this weekend at the Thousand Steps Trailhead.
Alright, goodnight.
It was unfortunate, your grandchildren and dog would have really loved it. Next time. My dog enjoyed it, my dog. Uh, like maybe 250 steps? About the full thousand steps, no. Cruz did a great job again. At the, at the trailhead opening. Did a great job. Oh yeah. Your dogs were not present?
No.
No, dogs were not present. Exciting soccer game this weekend at South West University. I think we, a round of applause to referee Canales for a wonderful job.
I think we, a round of applause to referee Canales for a wonderful job. Chris Canales is one of the, uh, is it assistant referees? Are you an assistant referee or side referee? What's your official term?
Assistant referee.
I love that.
That's kind of... For what, what, you, you weird?
Yeah.
I think I'm supposed to be with the... Trying to have a conversation, talk about what's going on. I'm still doing that. China programs would be, then, I was, my granddaughter's over there. I was worried about, uh, Chinese and, and Spanish, so...
That's good.
That's been a better one to do.
Yeah. One of the best, hello.
Which, which is saying, you guys, what make it?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but maybe the school that was like a mall, I mean, it's just...
Really?
Yeah. It's amazing. Yeah, we just got there early last night.
I wanted to, you know, you're reading the, sorry. I should have, you feel like a national guy in the door, should I? I should have, like, represented, because I'm like, perhaps. Yeah, I...
What time I think it's coming?
Council, may I have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Second. There's a motion and a second to recess. All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is a recess at 12:28 PM.
We are, of course.
Yes.
All right, motion, now?
Certainly. There's a motion and a second to come out of recess. All in favor? Anyone opposed?
Yes.
The meeting is back in session at 12:29 PM.
Okay, we're gonna have Claudia read this. This is the one she's reading. Mayor Potem, will you please read the...
Yes.
Motion. All right.
All right.
Have your kitchen.
I will be reading the resolution. Okay, so this is a motion made on March 25th, 2019, whereas, as of 2018, the U.S. southern border has confronted an unprecedented number of migrants seeking asylum in the United States. And whereas since October 1st, 2018, federal authorities have processed and released approximately 50,000 migrants onto Al Paso streets. And whereas arrival migrants lack the means of secure food, shelter, medical care, or transport out of the city of El Paso. And whereas the city, the city has thus far averted an imminent crisis relating to homeless migrants due to the goodwill of nonprofit organizations such as the Annunciation House, local churches, and other thief-based organizations who have housed, fed, and transported as many as 753 migrants per day. And whereas the resources of local groups striving to aid with the ongoing arrival of migrants has substantially depleted. And whereas the city and other agencies anticipate the continued arrival and release of thousands of migrants into the El Paso area. And whereas the U.S. government has failed to provide the necessary infrastructure, personnel, or financial resources to eliminate the mass release of migrants onto city streets. And whereas the release of mass groups of people without access to portable water, food, or shelter exposes the migrants and El Paso residents to the origination and spread of potential and actual disease. And whereas the potential encampment of large groups of migrants on the city roads of, of right-of-way and parks poses safety risks to migrants and citizens alike. And whereas, in waiting to do support of the federal government, the city finds that the expenditure of public funds for the temporary housing, care, and transport of migrants released into the city of El Paso accomplishes a valid public purpose of protecting public infrastructure and protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of El Paso. And whereas the local, non-governmental organizations have the ability and desire to support with the care of transient migrants. Therefore, motion made, seconded and carried, that in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare that the city manager is granted broad authority until April 29, 2019, to take all necessary action to commit, direct, and assign necessary personnel and resources, with the exception of financial contributions, to provide humanitarian relief to migrants released by federal authorities into the El Paso community. We'll make an amendment in a moment, but that's what, will be read into the record right now. Number two, the motion also ratifies past actions taken by city officials and employees in response to previous migrant influxes that have occurred. Three, the mayor is directed to notify the El Paso federal delegation to include Congressman Veronica Escobar, Senator Ted Cruz, and Senator, uh, John Cornyn of the request in need for reinforcement for resources and expenditures used in addressing the continual arrival of release of migrants. Number four, that the city manager does not need be authorized to provide a contribution of public funds in an amount not to exceed $20,000, establish funding sources, and make any necessary budget transfers to make said contribution to the United Way a nonprofit corporation towards funding a volunteer coordinator. Number five, that upon the city attorney's office review, that the city manager does not need be authorized to execute any and all necessary documents, including agreements with United Way. And number six, that the city manager is directed to provide quarterly reports to city council of the budgetary impacts of the city's efforts to address the current immigration influx. Such report to include, but not limited to, expenses pertaining to transportation and personnel.
Is there a second statement?
Okay, and then, so the amendment to this would be on...
Let's, let's see if I, for the, let's have the discussion for... We have a motion and a second. What, what comments or questions or amendments or otherwise do you want to...
I just also amended really quick to add Congressman Will Hurd as well.
Yeah, well, it says federal delegation in the deal. Just federal delegation, is what it actually originally reads. Okay? So, and that will include Congressman. But, uh, all right, we have a motion and a second on this one. Is there any further discussion on this one?
Do you want to discuss the amendment, or we can discuss it? So, um, the amendment that Representative Ordas Pedros is going to read is going to address an issue that this council has, um, with the immediate situation. And when Mr. Garcia was up here, he talked about 79 people that would, he does not have capacity for today, with a possible to 500 by the end of the week. And so, we want to make sure that we have the ability, if necessary, hopefully not necessary, but if necessary, to alleviate the public safety concern that we have with 500 people or plus or minus on the streets of El Paso. So I don't know if you want to read it?
I just wanna, I just wanna add on to that. You know, in seeking to set, to set a standard for a safe and secure city, we as a council, as a mayor, and as a city are obligated to do what is necessary and within our bounds to minimize any dangerous conditions for our involved. It's important that we support any, any motion today that can direct staff to, to create a strategy to deal with that, and also to understand that it is a valid public safety, an immediate public safety to deal with this. In regards towards possible issues of disease and also public safety loitering, it is not within the best parts of our city to have, um, children and parents wandering through any part of our city insecure. It doesn't help them, and it certainly doesn't help the safety of our residents in El Paso. And I think that the public safety issue is front and center of a lot of the concerns of this council today.
And I want to add that this is not a long-term, like guaranteed amount of money. This is a last resort public safety concern.
As, um, Ruben had mentioned on the record today, that there's, um, there's a strain on what Annunciation House can do. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but he did say that there was going to be at least, um, close to 100, um, left on our streets today. Um, that poses, like as we've said, a, a, a public safety issue. It poses a concern, um, uh, with folks just, uh, on, on our streets in downtown and across our community. So we just want to make sure that we're giving our chief and the folks that he's working with at, at, um, at OEM the ability to make, uh, these types of decisions to, to ensure that, that the public's safe, uh, the public is safe. Um, and, uh, this is a, of course, it is a short-term solution. Um, this is a, an ongoing discussion, um, that, that is, that's, that we're gonna have to, that, that this council's going to have to have. Um, so, in, in this motion, we do have, uh, this authority until April 29th. That is when we will be discussing this again. Uh, so as Representative Anall said, this is not a long-term, um, decision. This is just a short-term, uh, action that, that if this, if this body allows, we will be taking today, based on the information that we heard, um, from the Annunciation House earlier. So the amendment to, to this motion would be on item number one, which would be striking, with the exception of financial contributions.
Second.
We would hope too that, that the federal government and their entities, whether it's Department of Homeland Security, um, CPB, or other institutions, understand the pressure and stress that they're causing on the local level. Uh, these are humanitarian, international issues that's, that need to be solved on the federal level, and we implore, um, our federal delegation and all members of our federal government to step to the plate to deal with this, these issues. It's not about political parties, it's about the citizens of El Paso and our people.
And I would like our city attorney to address this particular item on this amended motion as to what her, uh, thoughts are related to the legal issues.
We discussed the legal issues in executive. Council wants me to discuss what was discussed in executive session. I would need you all to waive the privilege and vote.
Just answer the, can you answer the question on, do we have legal issues related to this amendment? Is there a possibility of issues?
Yes.
I mean, what is your, okay.
Well, then I would ask that you, well, then I would ask that you all waive the attorney-client privilege and allow me to speak in public about what I said in executive session. Otherwise, I, I can't speak in public about what I said in executive session.
I don't, I don't see how that's, that, I mean, you talk about the legal parameters at council meetings all the time. What is the difference with this, with this issue?
Well, because I gave you, I gave you legal counsel and advice. The whole point of us publishing the agenda in executive session is for you to receive counsel. We published, we published, and we went into executive under the attorney-client privilege for you to receive advice from the city attorney's office. If you all want me to discuss what I said in executive, then you all would need to waive that privilege, vote, and allow me to speak publicly about what I was...
But you serve the citizens of El Paso, so I don't see what the difference is.
I serve, ma'am, my, my role as the city attorney for the governing body of this... This, this, this governing body. You would need to...
If you look at the hierarchy system, the, the citizens of El Paso are on the top of that hierarchy system.
Correct. And I agree with that, but if you want me to discuss what I discussed in executive session, then you all would give me, to give me that authority. So you all can make a motion to allow me to speak about what we discussed in executive, when we give you legal advice and open, or you choose not to?
I believe that, uh, we have enough information to make our decision without, without, um, putting our city attorney, uh, on the spot. Every person in this room has had an opportunity to hear their information as it, as it was presented. Uh, we, we have a unique opportunity to do something here for this community, uh, that is within our purview and within our power, uh, as a city council. I, I truly hope that everyone understands that this is a short-term fix to a long-term, uh, problem. What we, what we need is for our federal, uh, delegation to do their job and get involved with, uh, immigration reform, because this right here is a second or third-world effect of the federal government plan, politics with issues that need to be addressed. Um, and, and we as a city should not be put in this position to, to deal with, uh, federal issues and to be placed in a position where the expenditure of city dollars or taxpayer dollars, uh, falls solely and squarely on our shoulders. Um, I would like to know if, uh, federal, federal, federal government or federal delegation is going to do the right thing, step up and apply the pressure where it should be, and it shouldn't be on this council. But with this situation being a safety issue, I feel very confident with the, with the decision or the vote that I will cast, uh, in support of giving the city attorney, uh, excuse me, giving the city manager, uh, the broad authority to continue to do with, do what he has done to this point, and to give Chief DiAgostino the ability to properly, uh, run, uh, his department and his cell.
You are supportive of this amendment?
Yes.
All right, well, if there's no further discussion on this...
I, I just wanted to share the same sentiments as my colleagues, um, but, you know, we, we've already established that this is a public safety issue. I also believe that this is an economic development issue, to have, um, potential influxes of, of migrants, um, in the streets. Um, also, uh, we are a compassionate and generous community, at least, that is what I'm hearing from my constituents, uh, that the city and the county in a collaborative approach should do more. Um, and for those reasons, I'm also supporting the amendment and the resolution.
All right, let's vote on this amendment. Wait a minute.
Okay, I have one other amendment to...
Do you have a clarification? Oh, another amendment?
Yeah, it's, it's an amendment to the same, to the same, uh, uh, motion on, on number one. So it's in, it's in the very beginning. It states that the findings listed and the whereas are hereby incorporated into this motion.
Okay. All right, we have an amendment to this resolution motion. Let's vote on that, and then we'll vote on the whole motion.
So there is a, a motion?
The one that was read by Claudia related to the... Okay.
Okay, so this is the, the motion, this is a vote of the amendment read into the record by Mayor Potem Feres. On that amendment, Representative Salcedo?
Yes.
Short line.
Yes.
Anello?
Aye.
Ednandez?
Yes.
Isadore?
Aye.
Vivera?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
And Pedros?
Aye.
And that motion does pass unanimously.
All right, now let's vote on the full motion as amended.
Mayor, just putting a clarification on the amendment, talking about sending it later to our federal delegation, is there anything included in terms of Department of Homeland Security processes? In respect to the hours? Yeah, we're, yes. That's, okay, well...
Do you want to speak more about that, so the public understands what we're talking about?
Yeah, so one of, one of the things that was discussed as well, um, is trying to also get a sense how, um, basically how the Department of Homeland Security is able to transport other, um, other migrants to Albuquerque or other communities, and there's some discussion about the ability to have some of these migrants be able to be transported to other cities within Texas. Obviously, we're probably the farthest west Texas town, so all the, all the towns they'd be, could be transported to would be going east, including Dallas and San Antonio and others. So we're also asking our federal delegation to look into ways of amending, um, their services and their contract for transportation as well.
All right, to clarify, all be respective. It, it simply says, according to what we've, information we've been given, that ICE has a contract that limits the travel on buses to eight hours.
Yes.
Period. And we need longer, if we're gonna go to Dallas, if they're gonna go to San Antonio, they need longer than eight hours. And that's what we're going to inquire of, of ICE, if they can amend their contractual obligations with their bus transportation services to, to go longer than eight hours, which would alleviate some of the concerns we have. Okay, so are we ready to vote on this?
There's, there's a motion and a second to approve the motion read into the record by Mayor Potem Feres as amended. On that motion, Representative Salcedo?
Yes.
Short line.
Aye.
Anello?
Aye.
Ednandez?
Yes.
Isadore?
Aye.
Vivera?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
And Pedros?
Aye.
And that motion also passes unanimously. Motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Second. There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the special city council meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2019, is adjourned at 12:46 PM.